Thank you all for being here. Would you all please join me, rise as we go through an opening prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for everyone that is assembled here on this evening. Lord, we ask that you bless us as we prepare to celebrate Thanksgiving on this week. Bless those that have and bless those that do not have. God, we ask that you continue to lead, guide, and direct this council as we make decisions and be with us every step of the way. We pray for our community and everyone that lives in Talbot County, our police officers, our emergency services staff, our nurses, our doctors, everyone in our community. In the mighty and precious name of Jesus, we pray on this evening. Amen.
Thank you again for joining us this evening. Council has an agenda in front of it. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, the chair will move that the agenda be accepted with unanimous consent. And we have minutes of the October 28th and November 4th meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
Hearing none, the chair will move that the minutes be approved with unanimous consent. We have record of the dispersments of November 11th, November 18th, and November 25th before us. Are there any questions for staff on the dispersments? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be approved with unanimous consent. Next up, we have a council commendation for our, for Hannah Ward, our Maryland 911 Board Communication Specialist of the Year, Holly Gushke. Are you here to present Hannah to us? Please come, come up to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Plesch, and thank you, council.
Welcome, Mr. Repates.
I'll turn it over to Holly. So Holly's the division chief that oversees the 911 center and she's the one that put Hannah up for this award, the well-deserving award. Hannah's one of the shining stars, has only been with us going on two years, but has really grasped the job and excels at it and is one of the calming voices on the other end of the 911 line when people call out for help. So I'll turn it over to Holly. She can read her, what she, or...
Commendation.
Whatever, the commendation that she presented or applied for and turned over to Hannah. I'll just sit in the background.
Good evening. So every year, the state of Maryland gives an award to every county for the 911 Communication Specialist of the Year. This year, we allow our employees to vote and they overwhelmingly voted for Hannah. Hannah Ward has been employed with Talbot County DES since July 2023 and she's currently a communication specialist too. It is with great pride and enthusiasm that we nominate Hannah Ward for the 911 Communication Specialist of the Year. Hannah consistently exemplifies the qualities of an outstanding dispatcher through her unwavering dedication, professionalism, and positive presence in the workplace. She approaches each shift with a calm, teachable spirit and consistent positive attitude, even in the most pressure situations. She is a true team player who not only supports her own shift, but regularly steps up to assist others in covering open shifts, handles radio traffic, and lends a hand wherever she can. Her flexibility and reliability are unmatched and she consistently goes above and beyond without hesitation. She handles emergency calls with clarity and compassion. Her ability to stay organized and prioritized under pressure ensures that callers receive the critical assistance they need while nothing falls through the cracks. Hannah's multitasking skills, attention to detail, and calm demeanor make her a steady trusted presence during even the most chaotic moments. Beyond her technical skill, what truly sets Hannah apart is her attitude. She is a breath of fresh air, supportive, respectable, respectable, and generally enthusiastic about her role. She provides exceptional customer service, treating every caller and colleague with kindness and empathy. Her commitment to excellence combined with her humility and willingness to grow makes her not only a valued team player, but also a clear future leader within our center. Hannah Ward is an integral part of our team and exemplifies the very best of what 911 dispatchers should be. For exceptional service, positive influence, and tireless dedication, she truly deserves the title of 911 Communication Specialist of the Year.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Having heard all that, shall we ask the secretary to read the commendation into the record?
Council's commendation to Hannah Ward, the Maryland 911 Board 911 Communication Specialist of the Year, for her outstanding service and dedication to public safety through 911 communications, through her demonstration of professional, courteous, and responsive service to county citizens using the Talbot County 911 emergency system with calmness, clarity, and compassion, and for her multitasking skills, attention to detail, and positive attitude toward her job and the respect, kindness, and empathy shown to both callers and colleagues. We hereby bestow upon you as a token of the esteem and gratitude of our community, this certificate of commendations this 25th day of November 2025.
Do we have motion to award the commendation?
So moved.
How about the second, third?
Would the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Cowan, Mr. Plescher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Any, any council remarks?
I'll, I'll start it off if you don't mind. So Holly, thank you for, for your kind words. Brian, thank you for your kind words. But Hannah, just thank you for what you do. I, I love the three words in here. I think I, I want to just call out myself, right? So where'd they go? The three, the three Cs, calmness, clarity, and compassion. I just want everyone to just imagine, if you've ever had a call on the 911, you're not having a good day, right? People aren't calling to say hi. These are, most of the times, probably one of the worst days of their lives. You know, for you to just be there to answer them and to help them, get them the resources they need is just, it's just awesome. I love doing this every year. Congratulations. Just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Just congratulations, Hannah, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And now, thank you for your invaluable service.
Thank you.
We, we, we know what a valuable link you are at the very beginning of the emergency services project, process and, and to be recognized by your own colleagues. That's, that's really something. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Would, would you like to come forward then and receive the certificate?
Sure.
Next, we have a proclamation for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month for November. Would the secretary please read that into the record?
Proclamation, Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2025. Whereas November is recognized as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month to bring attention to the plight of individuals and families experiencing hunger and/or homelessness, which affects people of all ages, genders, races, and backgrounds, and is an area of concern in our community. And whereas, there are a myriad of reasons why people experience hunger and/or homelessness, including the shortage of affordable housing, lack of a living wage, trauma, the ability to no longer work due to age or health conditions, expensive or inaccessible healthcare, serious mental health challenges, or substance use. An education of the public is needed to encourage support for hunger and homelessness assistance service providers. And whereas, there are many organizations in Talbot County committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to individuals and families experiencing hunger and homelessness, including Talbot Interfaith Shelter, Neighborhood Service Center, St. Vincent de Paul, Midshore Roundtable on Homeless, Homelessness at Midshore Behavioral Health, Talbot County Public Schools McKinney Vento Homelessness Assistance Program, and Midshore Council on Family Violence. And whereas, the theme of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is to promote understanding and compassion toward those who are experiencing hunger and/or homelessness, and to advocate for solutions to end hunger and homelessness by providing sustenance and housing stability. And whereas, the County Council of Talbot County recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in our area. And whereas, the intent of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is consistent with the activities of local organizations working to address hunger and homelessness. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim November as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month in Talbot County and encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have adequate food and housing and need support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit service entities. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 25th day of November in the year of our Lord 2025.
I need a motion to issue the proclamation?
So moved.
At a second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Plescher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And I see we have Ms. Julie Lowe here. Would you like to offer any words, any further explanation on what we're doing for homeless Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month? Do you have any partners that you brought today too?
I didn't bring anybody today. I'm representing everybody on the proclamation. We are very grateful to Talbot County Council for making this proclamation. Homelessness is something that we all need to consider. As the time goes on, it's getting, growing more and more. We have 140 people on our waitlist and we are at capacity in both of our shelters and our transitional housing. We are also looking at senior homelessness as a special challenge, shall we say? Because our program, we encourage people to work and save their money so they can get back into the rental market. But with seniors, that's a totally different picture. So I appreciate the council's concern with that as well. And I just want to thank you for this proclamation and recognizing that November is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month.
Thank you. Any, any questions or remarks from council?
I have one. Julie, first and foremost, thank you and all of your partners for all that you do to help Talbot County with this. Just one question. How many does your shelter house, both of your shelters for homelessness?
In the family shelter, we can house five families of all different sizes.
Okay.
In the single shelter, we house 14 individuals. And then in our transitional housing, we have 21 units. Some are houses, some are apartments. And there's 30 to 40 people in those at any given time. So at any time, we're housing more than 60 people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add quickly, Mr. Vice President, so I'll just, I'll just echo the thanks. Like you said, you're representing a lot of, a lot of organizations here and a lot, a lot of organizations do a lot of key work here in Talbot County. I know there's, there's places you can drive in this county and you think there'd be no way we have a homelessness problem. But as, as you guys are bringing to light we do, and I just want to thank you guys for all that you all do, for all the organizations to, to help and out here in the ways that you do. So thank you.
You have anything further?
Just thank you for all you do and homelessness is a big issue and the, the more problems we have with our economy, the more this problem is going to grow. So I'm glad you're all there.
Thank you.
This, this is indeed the, the issue of our time and, and thanks for what you and all the other partner organizations are doing, as, as Mr. Step said.
Couldn't do it without all of us working on this problem.
Indeed, indeed. Well, thank you and we've got a proclamation for you. Mr. Step has it. If you want to come forward for the photos. And that's not the only proclamation for this evening. We also have one for the 40th anniversary of the Festival of Trees. If the secretary would read the proclamation into the record, please.
40th Anniversary Festival of Trees 2025. Whereas, the Friends of Hospice will be hosting the Festival of Trees from Friday, November 28th through Tuesday, November, December 2nd, 2025, in the Gold Room of the Tide Water Inn in Easton with the theme of 40 Years of Silver and Gold. And whereas, the Festival of Trees was started by Leslie Ware and Midge Menzies. And whereas, the Festival of Trees offers many events for everyone to enjoy, including the signature event, the Festival of Trees in the Gold Room of the Tide Water Inn, the Preview Gala, Carols by Candlelight, Santa's 5K Run, Hoinsetia Sale, and Luminary Sale. And whereas, 2025 marks the 40th anniversary of the Festival of Trees and funds raised from the Festival of Trees help support the Talbot Hospice Foundation, which provides professional, team-oriented care to patients faced with a life-limiting illness in an atmosphere of comfort and dignity. And whereas, November is recognized as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. And since its inception 40 years ago, the Festival of Trees has raised more than $3.7 million for the Talbot Hospice Foundation. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize November 28th through December 2nd, 2025 as Festival of Trees Week and acknowledge the dedicated work of Leslie Ware and Midge Menzies and the entire Friends of Hospice Board and Festival of Trees Chairs in arranging this year's events. And further, the council urges all citizens to support Friends of Hospice and therefore, the Talbot Hospice Foundation by purchasing tickets for the Festival of Trees and participating in the many events planned. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 25th day of November in the year of our Lord 2025.
We have the proclamation before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
At a second.
Would the secretary call the roll, please?
Mr. Plescher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And that is approved and we have, congratulations. Folks here from Festival of Trees. You have exciting news to tell us about how Festival of Trees is going for its 40th anniversary this year? Would you like to introduce you, would you like to introduce yourselves in the, in the group?
Yes, I'm Leslie Ware.
Midge Menzies. Carla Terry. Dale Jafari, who's behind me.
Brendan Ford.
Brendan Ford. Delicia Salisbury.
Yes. So we are busy at work over in the Gold Room. The last 48 hours setting up for our 40th anniversary of the Festival of Trees. And we are overwhelmed by the support that this amazing community has given us for 40 years. And for those of you who didn't know, the, the seed that started all of this was, we witnessed firsthand 42 years ago the compassionate care that Talbot Hospice gave to Midge's mother-in-law, Virginia Fuller. And after she passed away, we went to Talbot Hospice and at that point, it was a little corner office in the Health Department. And we walked down the hall and saw this door that said Talbot Hospice and Midge and I walked in and said, what can we do? And it was Millie Parrott, Betsy Guthrie, and...
Dr. Guthrie.
Yeah, Dr. Guthrie, and Kathy Foster. And we said, what can we do? And they said, we need to spread the word of what hospice care is and we also need to raise money. And hence, the Festival of Trees was born at that point. We went down and there was one in the country, down in Wilmington, North Carolina. And Midge and I flew down and spoke to the chairman there and spent the next year writing how we were going to do this and forming committees and forming Friends of Hospice. And so here we are in our 40th year. It's 40 Years of Silver and Gold and it is a magical room there. If you all walked in right now, you would see how wonderful this community, the sponsors, the decorators, the volunteers, everybody that partakes in this amazing event. And we're very proud of what we have done in the, in the 40 years.
Well, you, you've, you've got a wonderful event. I get there year after year and, and it is a community event. It's, it's, it's more than simply a fundraiser. It's, it's a wonderful gathering of community. One of, one of my, one of my reasons for getting there has been the musical performances by all the students with East Middle School Band or with, with various private teachers in the community. It's, it's really a wonderful occasion that, for, for all of that, that showcases not only the, the skills of the, the decorators of various trees, but so much of our community. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
I'll echo what Mr. Plescher said. This is a wonderful community event and I look forward to attending this year with my grandson, who will be two. So I'm excited about that. So thank you all, the committee, for all that you do and Midge, for the two of you for starting this 40-plus years ago.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm proud to say that I was involved with hospice from the very beginning and my new father-in-law unfortunately was diagnosed with cancer and he was in hospice and he passed. And the Milkies got together and I think they decorated the first trees with the lights. You know, they didn't get trees with lights. All the trees had to be lit. And so we were all doing that. And it was, it was just, it was just wonderful. It was just a wonderful thought and a wonderful recognition of the citizens of, of Talbot County and, and of course, you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is, this is definitely a week of thanks. No, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. These are always my favorite parts of our meetings, right? We, we all have a lot of business to get through, but you know, just the fact that we get to recognize, you know, folks like yourselves who are just taking on important causes that we have in our community. It's just, it's nice to make sure we can recognize you, praise you guys, give thanks to you all and just, again, just keep doing what you all are doing. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the introduction of an administrative resolution. If the secretary would please read that into the record?
You want me to read the entire thing or just the captions, just the title?
Are we, are we happy with just the title on this one? Let's just read the title.
Administrative Resolution Authorizing the Use of the General Fund Reserve, If Required, for the Payment of Debt Service for the County's General Obligation Bonds, MWIFA Project.
All right. And we have Ms. Sparks with us from our finance office to explain why we thought we accomplished this last time, but we've got to go, go through this again. It's not sufficient to wear a belt. We need suspenders too.
Yes, exactly. That's the best analogy for this. Good evening, council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. Talbot County is working with the Maryland Department of the Environment to secure a funding package that is a combination of grants, bonds, and loan forgiveness. This funding assists with the financing of improvements to Talbot County Sanitary District's Region 2 Sewer System Extension Resolution 235. This resolution is requesting that the county council pre-approve the use of reserves in the county's general fund. Talbot County's reserve policy requires that the county manager certify availability of the funds and request that the county council approve the use of the funds. This resolution will require no further approval by the county council for the use of reserves for payment of the debt service on these bonds if needed. We do not anticipate needing that, but MDE wants extra assurances.
Are there questions for Ms. Sparks on the administrative resolution?
No.
So this will take care... This is specifically for all the sewer hookups in the Resolution 250 area down...
235.
235 area?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, and as soon as we get this resolution passed by council, we'll be able to get that bond closing scheduled.
We need to introduce...
Once it's introduced, it can be adopted by...
Yes, but do an introduction by show of hands first. All right, who is introducing this resolution? It is introduced by council, and since this is eligible for an immediate vote, are there any discussion on this before we proceed with the vote? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the introduction of an administrative resolution.
If the secretary would please read that into the record.
You want me to read the entire thing or just the captions? Just the title?
Are we happy with just the title on this one? Let's just read the title.
Administrative Resolution Authorizing the Use of the General Fund Reserve if Required for the Payment of Debt Service for the County's General Obligation Bonds, MWIFA Project.
All right, and we have Ms. Sparks with us from our Finance Office to explain why we thought we accomplished this last time, but we've got to go through this again. It's not sufficient to wear a belt. We need suspenders, too.
Yes, exactly. That's the best analogy for this. Good evening, Council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. Talbot County is working with the Maryland Department of the Environment to secure a funding package that is a combination of grants, bonds, and loan forgiveness. This funding assists with the financing of improvements to Talbot County Sanitary District's Region 2 Sewer System Extension Resolution 235. As you know, the council has authorized the issuance of $7,118,942 in general obligation bonds in Bill Number 1619 and an administrative resolution that was passed on October 28th, 2025. The debt service for these bonds will be paid from the revenues from the Talbot County Sanitary District. The county is issuing general obligation bonds that are backed by the Full Faith, Credit, and Taxing Authority of Talbot County, because general obligation bonds provide the strongest assurance that that debt will be repaid. However, upon further review by MDE staff, they've requested additional assurance through another administrative resolution. This resolution is requesting that the county council pre-approve the use of reserves in the county's general fund. Talbot County's reserve policy requires that the county manager certify availability of the funds and request that the county council approve the use of the funds. This resolution will require no further approval by the county council for the use of reserves for payment of the debt service on these bonds if needed. We do not anticipate needing that, but MDE wants extra assurances.
Are there questions for Ms. Sparks on the administrative resolution?
No.
So this will take care... This is specifically for all the sewer hookups in the Resolution 250 area down...
235.
235 area?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, and as soon as we get this resolution passed by council, we'll be able to get that bond closing scheduled.
We need to introduce...
Once it's introduced, it can be adopted by...
Yes, but do an introduction by show of hands first. All right, who is introducing this resolution? It is introduced by council, and since this is eligible for an immediate vote, are there any discussion on this before we proceed with the vote? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck as we proceed to closing on these bonds, and hopefully we can get these connections made.
All right, we have just a couple of minutes before we are allowed to open up our public hearings scheduled for 5:30. To make good use of time, can we proceed with the first item under County Manager's Report? Mr. County Manager?
Sure, thank you, Council. Under County Manager's Report this evening, boards and committee appointments, I have three for you this evening. The first one is regarding the Economic Development Commission, requesting the appointment of Dr. Michael Meyer as the Town of St. Michael's representative to that board or commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With motion and second, would the secretary call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
That one is approved. Mr. Stamp?
The next would be the Midshore Behavioral Health Board of Directors, requesting the appointment of Annie... I'm sorry, Amy Hoffman, Director of the University of Maryland Medical Systems Shore Regional Health Behavioral Health Unit, and the reappointment of Shanez Jenkins from Peace of Mind Mental Health Services.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
And that is for both appointments?
Yes.
Appointments and reappointments. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I was distracted.
Your vote.
Your vote.
Your vote on the appointment.
Sorry.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And finally, the Planning Commission, we are requesting your consideration for the reappointment of Mr. Chip, Council, to the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment of Chip.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
All right, and we are at 5:30, so we will continue on with... Flip back to the public hearings. First up is Bill Number 1621. Would the secretary please read the title into the record?
Bill Number 1621, a bill to amend Chapter 190 zoning subdivision and land development, Sections 190-25.2 table of land uses and 190-29 commercial uses regarding funeral homes and crematoria.
All right, this was introduced. Now, I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on Bill 1621 on this amendment to the zoning? We have Mr. Showalter here, and if you are speaking as for yourself, as an individual, you'll have three minutes. If you're speaking for an organization and will be the only one speaking for that organization, you can have five minutes.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Ryan Showalter, 100 Northwest Street, Eastern Maryland. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, and I have Mr. Kirk Health and Byham with me, the staff report that you have summarizes the history of this text amendment. As you know, there were some initial comments that were provided to the Planning Commission. The text amendment was refined to address the few minor suggestions that came out of discussions both with this council and the Planning Commission, and it's before you now with the unanimous favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. So if there are any questions from the council, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, we appreciate your support.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on Bill 1621? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this bill, but leave the record open for written comments until noon on Friday, December 5th. This will be eligible for a vote on December 9th. Next up, we have Bill Number 1622. Would the secretary read the title into the record, please?
Bill Number 1622, a bill to amend Chapter 190 zoning subdivision and land development of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of providing for classes of short-term rental licenses and amending certain provisions pertaining to short-term rental licenses, including, one, the composition and term of the Short-Term Rental Review Board, two, contents of new applications, three, hearings, decisions, and appeals, four, renewal, five, grounds for denial, and six, additional restrictions.
I seem to have skipped over this step, but Mr. Thomas, do you have anything that you'd like to give for background on this one?
I can briefly, as I stated at the introduction. So this bill simply reflects the proposal that was initially brought forward by Vice President Lesher and Councilmember Milkie, with three changes, all of which were recommended by the Planning Commission. The differences from what was initially presented are that the proposed increase in minimum night stay for certain zoning districts from three days to seven days was removed, the proposed requirement for a landline telephone was removed, and the proposed requirement for keeping a log of rentals was removed.
Okay. Any questions from council?
For...
For Bill 1622?
I just wanted you to clarify that. When the bill was first presented to the Planning Commission and it came back with suggestions, most of those changes or many of the changes were made as a result?
Those were three changes, those were three requirements in the original version that you all voted to send to the Planning Commission that had been removed based on the Planning Commission's recommendations, but it otherwise contains the language it was originally and what you forwarded.
Just wanted that to be clear for the record. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we can open the hearing on Bill 1622. If you are coming forward to speak, I'll ask you to speak at the microphones at this table here. If you are speaking as an individual, you will have three minutes. If speaking for an organization and you are the only one speaking for that organization, you may have five.
Sign-up sheet.
Anybody?
Sign-up sheet.
Do we have a sign-up sheet for this one?
We do.
Thank you for your patience, and we'll open this in just a moment. I'm sorry.
Okay, nobody signed up?
Thank you, and we'll take folks in the order that you've signed up, and if you haven't signed up in advance, you'll have an opportunity after those who have signed up have spoken. First up is Bill Morrison.
Thank you, Council. Bill Morrison, 303 Manor Street, St. Michael's, Maryland, literally across the street from the town of St. Michael's. I have a short-term rental unit in my primary residence. It's an auxiliary unit, houses two people at maximum. I've been licensed, I've been renewed, and I've been renewed a second time, and I just want to comment on the specific section 63.3, paragraph 5, subparaph, III, which requires me to notify all of my neighbors within 1,000 feet. I have 213 neighbors within 1,000 feet. So three times now in the last four years, I've had to provide notices and solicit signatures from 213 neighbors times three. I spent over $1,000 in postage for this. I've gone door-to-door. I've got a lot of email addresses now so that I can comply with this rule. I would ask you to consider dropping the requirement to 1,000 feet or a maximum of 50 neighbors when you're going through the renewal process. That would alleviate a lot of owner's effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Brown. Is Ms. Brown here?
I am, but I'm not getting up.
Okay, we will move on to Flannor.
Hello, everybody. I'm speaking on behalf of an organization, so five minutes would be great. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Emma Brown, and I'm speaking on behalf of Flannor, the Vacation Rental Company, and the many homeowners and guests we serve across Talbot County. I want to begin by underscoring something critically important. The Talbot County Planning Commission did not view most of the proposed changes in this bill as necessary or appropriate. They conducted months of review, gathered public input, and made thoughtful recommendations, yet the current proposal stands in direct opposition to those recommendations and does not incorporate the Planning Commission's evaluation or guidance. That alone should give us all pause. Beyond the procedural concern, the substance of this bill presents an even larger issue. There is no quantitative or factual evidence that short-term rentals cause measurable harm to Talbot County neighborhoods. To date, no study, no report, no data-driven assessment has shown that STRs increase crime, reduce housing availability, or disrupt communities. The arguments driving this proposal appear to rely almost entirely on personal opinion and anecdotal complaint and not objective analysis. Policy that reflects thousands of homeowners should never be built on speculation. It's also important to acknowledge reality. Short-term rentals are already heavily and thoroughly regulated in Talbot County. Obtaining a short-term rental license requires inspections, testing, documentation, and compliance with strict safety and zoning requirements. These processes can take up to multiple months. At Flannor, we have personally submitted hundreds of new and renewal applications. We know the system inside and out, and we can confidently say that this robust, comprehensive, and effective system ensures properties meet every county requirement. Many homeowners spend thousands of dollars each year just to remain compliant, from mandatory mailings to additional administrative costs. We fully support reasonable, balanced regulations that promote safety and accountability, but the current process is already vigorous and financially burdensome. This proposed bill does not solve a problem, instead it creates new ones. By imposing additional restrictions without evidence, the county risks harming a thriving local industry that supports cleaners, contractors, small businesses, restaurants, and shops. Short-term rentals bring tourism, support local jobs, and increase spending throughout our community. Weakening this economic engine based on unsupported claims would be a costly mistake. Finally, I want to address something difficult but necessary to say. A very small group of individuals have managed to drive much of a narrative behind this bill. Their concerns, while valid to discuss, do not represent the broader community, nor are they backed by data. It is concerning to see such limited perspectives carry disproportionate influence over county-wide policy. In closing, I urge council to reject this proposed legislation. Short-term rentals are already rigorously regulated, beneficial to the local economy, and operating without any evidence of causing harm. Moving forward with a bill that contradicts the Planning Commission's findings, lacks factual support, would place unnecessary burdens on responsible homeowners and small businesses. We ask instead for continued balanced data-driven oversight, not reactionary regulation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next is Emma Tierman. Emma Tierman? If I'm reading that correctly. Emma Tierman. If not, we can move on to Leslie Steen.
Hi, my name is Leslie Steen, and I live at 21748 Camper Circle in Tillman. I urge you to vote for this bill. By the changes that I would like to make, the bill, after six years of experience, accomplishes a number of things that need to be done. I'd like to set the framework a bit. What are the complaints against this bill? They're not very specific. The bill does not burden owners, agents, nor staff. It doesn't put STRs out of business, as some people have complained. It grandfathered them and improves the administration of the licensing. The parts that the industry is complaining to be most onerous were removed. The minimum seven-day stay requirement, the occupancy log, the required landline, all removed. What are the actual additions to the law? The bill requires the owner to provide readily available written information in the application to make it easier and more transparent for staff, the board, and the public. Things like how many occupants can be in the property. The bill clarifies how the STR board operates and makes decisions, for example, allowing video conferencing, notice of application information, contact information, application requirements that must be met for the license to be approved, conditions can be imposed. Investor licensing rules are aligned with those of homeowners. By limiting the density of STRs, this bill takes steps to address the important impacts that STRs have on the affordability of our workforce housing. Concentrations of STRs cause prices and rents to go up, freezing out the local, long-term, income-tax-paying population. The social fabric of our neighborhoods and communities are impacted. The ins and outs can overwhelm neighborhoods, change the very character of them, and change how we interact and support each other. Our volunteers can disappear. We had good evidence of volunteers this evening. Things we still need in the bill. Town residential zone needs to have the same limitations as villages, no more than one STR per every 500 feet. STR zones, TR zones are very similar in characteristics as villages, providing affordable housing
Our guests love Talbot County, and we work hard to give them a good, positive experience of the area. They've come to Talbot County to experience a number of things, not only the county, but just to celebrate birthdays, to experience water fowl, to just experience the unique nature of this county. And it's our honor to be able to host them, and so we want to continue that positive experience.
So, in the minute we have left, I would just reinforce two things. One, the Planning Commission almost unanimously disagreed with this bill. Two, and more recently, in this room in September, the Talbot County Department of Economic Tourism and Economic Development and Tourism stated that visitors generated $320 million in spending, supported 1,960 jobs, and 62 million in taxes. What I would submit is if this bill passes, it really puts in jeopardy about 200 jobs. If you would just round down and say one job per unit, you're talking about knocking out 10% of the tourism jobs in the county. That's really what you risk by passing this bill. Anything else? And just close with that. I think the first two resolutions you heard tonight, I think that will affect those two things, hunger and homelessness. I think we need the jobs. Tourism provides the jobs. That's what's at risk. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next is Dennis Forney.
Evening, folks. Thanks for the opportunity to make a few comments. I'll keep them brief. I agree that I've reviewed the legislation proposed and the existing regulations, which are already extensive, and I don't see any real need to add further to the bureaucracy, which I think that this proposed legislation would do. A little bit of a different take on this. We live out in Bosman. Throughout that area, people are scattered around. There's a lot of second homes out there. A lot of them are dark a lot of times of the year. We're down a lane, and there's not that much traffic along there. The thing about some of the Airbnbs, and we have one across the creek, and we had no problems with it. We've had another one right up the lane from us. We've had no problems with it. The one thing that I will say is, it's nice for us to look out occasionally and see lights, where most of the time we see darkness. And with the Airbnbs, a lot of these properties that would never be rented in for longer term, they do bring in some traffic. That puts a few sets, extra sets of eyes and ears around the neighborhood. And we all know, it's always good to have people looking out for things, to notice things. Maybe a house caught on fire. Maybe a house's plumbing blew up and flooding the place. We've had a lot of instances of that. So, there is that other thing, and I think that by limiting densities and things like that, you also cut out the public through the public hearing process. What goes on on Camper Circle in Tillman might be entirely different than what happens out in the Bosman area, and they all may be legitimate concerns. That's why we have a fairly extensive notification process to bring the public into the decision-making process. So, let the public hearing process take care of all that, instead of trying to add more and more and more bureaucratic language to determine every little single thing that could happen. So, let the public hearing process do its job. Let's shut the, let's cut down on the extra bureaucracy that this would bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jody Weinstein.
Hello, my name is Jody, and I live at 24687 Yaklav Road in St. Michael's.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. I decided to make St. Michael's my permanent home in 2016, and the theme of my discussion tonight is "Don't Kill the Goose That Lays the Golden Eggs." I took the liberty last June, when this bill began, of walking up and down Main Street, Tillman Island, and St. Michael's, and I surveyed 37 shops and restaurants, and I asked them point-blank, "Will decrease in tourism," which this will cause, this bill will cause, decrease in short-term rentals, will it have a negative effect on your business? Thirty-seven signed this saying yes. Here's my phone number. Here's my email. I made five packets and made sure they were all distributed to your offices. So, I'm hoping some of you took the liberty of calling some of them to actually talk to them about how this bill will affect their business and their livelihoods. I spoke to Lori, who is the director of the new, beautiful St. Michael's Community Center, and they have a new program called Work Force Development, Workforce Development. And that program is, they interviewed all the shops and restaurants. What kind of help do you need? They set up a commercial, a beautiful commercial kitchen. They're bringing in professionals. Their hope is to train people who've never had a job before, maybe the youth, to develop skills so these people can go into our community and perhaps have a job for the first time. That also is a direct impact to the previous conversation with homelessness, I think. So, tourism supports nearly 2,000 local jobs in Talbot County. Talbot County collects $1.93 million in lodging taxes. Short-term rentals participate in the collection of that money. That's money that goes towards our police, schools, local services. Cut tourism, cut jobs, cut opportunity. And my last thought is directed at Lynn Milkie, the author of this bill. My question to you is, once we decrease...
Just to be clear, in public remarks, you're addressing the full council here.
Okay. My question is, if money is decreased in our public funds due to the decrease in tourism, which will surely happen if this bill goes forward, are you going to increase our property taxes to make up the difference? That's my question, because money will have to come from somewhere, or you have to cut services, both of which I don't think are ideal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this legislation. I want to say that I think it's really misguided, very misguided and shortsighted, and I think that it's underestimated the impact that it's going to have on the local economy. My wife, Jody, just spoke to that, and I know she spoke personally with a good number of businesses in St. Michael's on Main Street, and almost all of them said that this would be very detrimental to their livelihoods. I want to also say that I was here at the last meeting, and it was clear that the Planning Commission was by and large opposed to most of the content of the bill. They removed the three things that, some of them I think got laughtered in this room. The idea of the landline being required for a quick response was one example. But I want to also, I know the time's limited here. I've had 20 years' experience with short-term vacation rental and never had a complaint, not a single one. And I know from the data that's been distributed amongst some other homeowners, short-term vacation rental owners, there've been minimal complaints. I think it's under 10 in a number of years. And I believe there's a hotline set up to address that, and I guess I don't understand what motivates this legislation. It's going to have a negative impact on the economy, and it kind of imposes, you know, a one-size solution across all of Talbot County. And I think situations are unique, and if there are individual complaints or problems, there's a process for dealing with that. So, I just want to echo what somebody else said, that there's plenty of regulation already. It doesn't need to be more burdensome, cumbersome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is James Flood.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak for this group. My name is James Flood. I was born here 71 years ago. My grandfather, Dr. Storch, from New Jersey, came down here in the 1920s, fell in love with the area. It was peaceful. It was quiet. It was tranquil. So much so that he bought the home on 7969 Tillman Island Road. That's on Harris Creek. That home has remained in our family for almost 100 years. I've been coming down here all my life. Twenty years ago, I decided I'd like to have my own place here. And so, I looked in the areas where the zoning was residential, because I wanted a quiet place. And I found a place also on Waterhole Cove, and it was great. And then, a short-term rental came in next door. A hotel, a small hotel, really. They have customers coming in and out all the time. They allow 12 people in a house under 2,000 square feet. That's pretty crowded. So, they show up every Saturday afternoon now, in season. We wait for the caravan to come down that driveway, and these people disgorge, and then they are on vacation. They aren't used to having a pool. They aren't used to having a dock, and they are there to have a good time. And they do have a good time. I'm the one who pays for it, because it's loud, and there's, you know, just things going on. I've had drones over my pool. I've had people with paintball guns on my property. All sorts of toys. I've had people on my dock. If I go talk to them, they'll sometimes quit, but they really don't, they're not going to see me again. They don't care. I can go to the owner, which I have done, which the STR tells you that's what you should do. And he's not a bad guy, but sometimes they do something, sometimes they don't. I don't go to the county, though, because I do have to maintain some relationship with this owner next door. We share a bond with the property. I pay $12,695 a year in property taxes. All I want is quiet enjoyment of my property. I'm not asking for anything else, just quiet enjoyment. Why I'm in an area zoned, residential, why am I having to fight for that? I hope you vote for this bill, and really, we need to move further ahead with other support for the homeowners who are paying the taxes. You know, people are throwing out numbers. Look at the number of, how many dollars homeowners are paying in property taxes versus the money coming in from the short-term rentals. But that, to me, is just a matter of fairness. I did, I thought I did everything I was supposed to, and still, I'm...
Mr. Flood, you are wrapping it up there. Thank you.
Thank you all for your service. My name is Tom Mitchell, and I've been a resident of Talbot County for 25 years. I want you to know that I support tourism. I'm actually in the hospitality business, and I love Talbot County. It's the most beautiful place in the world, as far as I'm concerned. I do believe, though, that the short-term rental situation is slightly out of balance and needs some fine-tuning and some either additional restrictions or additional enforcement. And the number-one area, I believe, that needs to be tightened up is the qualifications to serve on the Short-Term Rental Review Board. My understanding is, you have to be a full-time resident with a principal residence in Talbot County, and I agree with that. You have to have skin in the game. You have to understand the neighborhood and the environment. But there's also, it should also be a requirement that you cannot be a holder of a short-term rental license, or of an owner of a short-term rental property or properties, whether it be directly or through an LLC. So, I believe that's got to be tightened up, and I believe there are conflicts right now on the Short-Term Rental Review Board because of those two qualifications. The seven-day minimum, I can understand that, but there's another perspective there, and that is, if you had a motel or a hotel, and you invested millions of dollars, and you're paying taxes and employing people, you're going to lose a lot of weekend business because of the seven. The seven-day minimum was beneficial to them, and a lot of other, had other benefits too. But by eliminating that, you're going to hurt the motel and hotel industry. And I suggest you talk to some of those investors to see what they think about it. And then the third has to do with the record-keeping, and I think it's very important that they keep detailed records, just for transparency's sake. If there is an issue with a problem with a neighbor, as the last gentleman spoke, it seems like it's up to the neighbors to enforce the law. And it's quite difficult because of the transparency, lack of transparency. We really need to be able to show up at the renewal of the license and question, you know, certain uses and other details of the use of the property during previous year. So, those are the three points, and I hope that they will get some serious consideration. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next one simply reads "Tidewater Vacations."
Hi, good evening. I am a busy, so five, one o'clock. All right. Good evening. My name is Michelle Hoyle. I am the owner of Tidewater Vacations, a family-run agency that personally manages a curated collection of licensed, high-end waterfront homes right here in Talbot County. We are not some faceless corporation. We are neighbors deeply invested in the well-being of this community. Tonight, I stand before you not just for Tidewater Vacations, but for the entire responsible short-term rental community in Talbot County. More than 160 licensed properties that together generate over $2 million a year in lodging and accommodation taxes for the county, while sustaining nearly 2,000 local tourism-related jobs. I respectfully ask that you vote no on this bill, even in its revised form, for three straightforward reasons, sorry. First, there is simply no evidence of a widespread problem. In the last six years, the county has recorded fewer than 10 complaints across the entire license program. That's an average of fewer than two per year, an exceptional track record of compliance, not a crisis demanding drastic new regulations. Second, this bill crushes local families and small businesses under an avalanche of new red tape, without improving housing, without improving neighborhoods, and without improving anything at all. The proposed new rules would drive up costs and push responsible owners into either unregulated platforms or out of the market and the community completely. Licensed short-term rentals make up less than 2% of Talbot County's total housing stock. Even if half of them vanish tomorrow, fewer than 80 homes would enter the long-term market, a mere drop in the bucket compared to the county's real housing crisis. Meanwhile, the tourism revenue from these properties keeps housekeepers, landscapers, restaurants, and retail shops thriving, enjoying local residents year-round, employing. And third, Talbot County already has one of the strongest and most effective short-term rental programs in the state. Every property is licensed, inspected, actively monitored, and remits 10% of every booking in tax revenue. We maintain 24-hour hotlines, enforce strict quiet hours, and carry substantial liability insurance. If any property becomes a genuine problem, revoke its license. We fully stand behind that. But please don't punish the 99% of owners and managers who consistently follow the rules. Councilmembers, the data couldn't be clearer. Near zero complaints, near perfect compliance, and millions in tax revenue that directly benefits our community. If real issues emerge in the future, the responsible owners and operators in this room tonight stand ready to work with you on a targeted, data-driven solutions. This bill is misguided, is a misguided solution in search of a problem. It's a hammer looking for a nail, and the only thing it will hit is the heart of our community. You have the power and the evidence to protect our neighborhoods and the tourism economy that makes Talbot County thrive. Please vote no on this bill. Thank you for your time and your dedicated service.
Thank you. Next is Mindha Goldberg.
She's here about an hour ago.
So you're next, you're Stephen Goldberg, okay.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Steve Goldberg, thank you for this opportunity. Let me see if I can open my notes real quick. First, and I echo what was just said, and this was said in a lot of the prior hearings, that this bill feels like a solution in search of a problem. This is a well-regulated business in Talbot County and has been for some time. The, we've been doing it for fifteen years without incident and the, we're, I'm particularly con, I'm opposed to the whole bill, but I'm particularly concerned about the restrictions on non-residents. We don't live here full-time, we live in Baltimore, but we are here a lot, we spend a lot of money here, we spend more money, my wife was telling me, locally than we do back in Baltimore, the restaurants and all those other things. I, I don't like the sense that somehow non-residents are carpetbaggers. You could have someone who has, their principal residence in Talbot County, lives here eight months a year, goes away from May to September and rents their house every week and gets treated differently than I do because they're a resident. And they pay fewer property taxes. I don't claim a homestead exemption here, I pay more property taxes than they pay. The, so I, I think that favoring residents is unfair because there's this huge loophole that enables them to do that. In addition, I believe this is the case under the law and that is that if you have someone in a residential zone who rents their own property, that's their primary residence, I don't think any of the limitations on distance apply to them. So you could have, if it's a primary residence, you could have five primary residences in a row running to each other. I don't think that's fair. I also don't think the, it's fair that in a less dense zone, you can only have licenses a thousand feet apart. The, the, you, in a five-hundred-foot thing, you could have resident, S T Rs much closer to each other than in a thousand-foot zone. I don't know why in the less dense zones, we don't have the same five-hundred-foot regulation. And a lot of it's sort of random, depends on the shape of your street. In my, we measure all these distances from property lines according to the statute, they should really be measured from dwellings in these less dense zones. When you measure from the property lines, I'm on a circle, this is, this is the exact figure, the nearest S T R to me is four hundred feet property line to property line and about eleven hundred feet dwelling to dwelling. I did this on the county's mapping chart, so I'm using the county's own tool. Another house a little further down, it's, each time it's doubled, about nine hundred feet property line to property line, eighteen hundred and fifty feet dwelling to dwelling. Now I'm happy to give those notices, but I don't think that the limit should be, in terms of notices, that's fine, but in terms of the proximity of S T Rs, they should be allowed to be closer together in the less dense zone. Then the other thing that no one's really addressed, but I think is really important, and I did submit comments on this, is the transfer restrictions. I don't see any reason why my family shouldn't be entitled to inherit my property and continue the S T R business that I've had all these years and continue to use my property. I think that's really important. We've, you know, we want to keep this as a family retreat and being able to rent it is an important part of that ability.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My husband and I have operated a short-term rental for about ten years and we're here to voice our opposition to this bill. In two thousand and fifteen, we renovated a small waterfront home built in eighteen ninety and at the time we acquired it, this teardown of a house had been deteriorating for decades and had been a long-term rental to a series of tenants who were less than ideal neighbors. But we felt it had charm and potential, so we hired local electricians and contractors and spent tens of thousands more on building supplies, landscaping, and home decor and continue to spend to preserve this historic captain's cottage, which is now up to code, cute as a button, and very much in character with the small village of Nevett. Our neighbors were thrilled with our renovation and the transformation of this former eyesore. We were able to make this investment with the expectation of renting this property as a short-term rental. We are very selective in our guests, we have house rules that are designed to ensure our neighbors are not disturbed, the house rules are clearly communicated, and in ten years we've had no complaints. We as owners have paid over forty-five thousand dollars to Talbot County in property and short-term accommodation taxes during our initial application and then each year or each time we subsequently renew, we spend well in excess of a thousand dollars to mail the certified notices and meet required testing requirements. So we spend tens of thousands, I'm sorry, we spend thousands each year to maintain this property to a high level of aesthetic beauty. And I would suspect that most vacation rentals are among the best-maintained properties on their blocks and bring up the property values of the other properties in their neighborhood. You've heard about what the, our guests do to the local economy. We've heard maybe that there's a challenge to the business of local hotels. However, we're filling a niche in the hospitality realm by allowing guests to visit with their pets. Those tourists would not be visiting Talbot County without being able to travel with their pets and spending their money here. Most people don't have seven days to take a vacation, or if they have a long-term vacation, they don't want to come somewhere local, they want to go to the Caribbean or somewhere exciting like that. So I am very pleased that you've lowered that requirement to three days. There are concerns about short-term rentals destroying our neighborhoods or sense of community. In Nevett, as in Bosman, almost a third of our homes are weekend homes with non-permanent residents. Tillman, Oxford, St. Michael's, all have high numbers of part-time residents. This has a much bigger impact on the fabric of our towns than short-term rentals and there's no regulating around that. As much as we might yearn to, we cannot turn back the clock to maybe very tight towns where everyone has close relationships with their neighbors. Life in two thousand and twenty-five is more isolated for reasons that have nothing to do with short-term rentals. And over-regulating short-term rentals to reduce their number will not make a meaningful improvement in the character of Talbot County communities. The two aspects of the bill, proposed bill, we find most troubling are the rewriting of the section about short-term board members. It provides limitations to important voices at the table, namely short-term rental owners. And finally, section sixty-three G, requiring a public year, hearing is a huge waste of time. Everything is addressed in the application process, there's no new information to be gained by having a public hearing. And that would require us all to basically get attorneys because we're not going to show up at a hearing where we can possibly lose our livelihood without an attorney. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Charles Jones. Charles Jones.
Hi, Steve.
Okay. And next is Andy Warner. He was sitting outside. If we don't have Andy Warner here, I can now open the floor for those who did not sign up in advance over here.
I did sign up, but I'm, I'm going to do a little cleanup. My husband, Stephen Goldberg, spoke. I want to just...
Would you introduce yourself for the record, please?
My name is Mindha Goldberg, I live on Ingleton Circle. And although I'm not a county resident, I'm a Maryland resident and I am on the board of my homeowners association. I am an active participant in Talbot County. That said, I want to just focus on the restrictions that apply for our neighborhood, which is a thousand feet. My husband addressed that a thousand feet is from property to property line is not really the standard. The house that, I, I'll point out clearly why I'm here. There is another house four or five doors down that got a license three years ago. We're both grandfathered. Their house is within the thousand feet only because of property lines. We can't see their house, they can't see our house, it is more than a thousand feet apart. But what's crucial to us is that we've been here for fifteen years, we plan on owning this and then we plan on leaving it to our children. Our children live out of state, they will need the income that, that we have, and the business that we have created so that they can continue to own it. The problem is, the way this legislation is now written, I am grandfathered. I can keep my license as long as I renew and I'm in good standing. But my son, who is here more fre, or very frequently helps me manage it, he wasn't on the application from fifteen years ago. When he inherits it, he has to start from scratch and as this is written, he would not be allowed to maintain the license that we've had for fifteen years because there's another neighbor, which they're entitled to it, but we would lose it as a result. He would then have to sell the house and this family home would, would no longer be. My husband is from the Eastern Shore, we have roots here, and this would destroy that root. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On Bill sixteen twenty-two, anybody else wish to speak at this point in the back?
Representing Eastern Shore Vacation Rentals.
Is your name, your name?
And you'll introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Brian Troutman and I represent Eastern Shore Vacation Rentals, a company that has managed short-term rentals in Talbot County for twenty-three years. We currently oversee one of the largest groups of licensed S T R properties in the county and because of that, I see firsthand how these regulations affect homeowners, neighborhoods, and, and our local economy. Tonight I'm asking, I'm asking you to vote no to Bill sixteen twenty-two, not because I oppose regulation, but because this bill is unnecessarily, unnecessary, unsupported, and a misuse of the county's time and resources. Bill sixteen twenty-two is a solution in search of a problem. In the last ten years of operating here across hundreds of properties, the county has received fewer than ten documented complaints, ten in a decade. There's no crisis, no pattern of neighborhood disruption, no evidence that short-term rentals are burdening county systems. Our existing framework, the S T R review board, inspections, and local enforcement tools is already working exactly as intended. Creating new bureaucracy, bureaucracy without evidence of a problem is not a responsible, responsible governance. This bill is nearly identical to the one that was, that was rejected last time by basically everybody. When this legislation was introduced months ago, went through a full review, the Planning Commission rejected it. County staff and volunteers spent hours offering thoughtful, constructive changes, yet instead of incorporating even one of those recommendations, this bill has been brought back almost word for word. That disregards the expertise of the Planning Commission, the time invested by staff, and the collaborative process Talbot County relies on for sound policy. This bill adds confusion, not clarity, and carries real financial consequences. Bill sixty-two layers on vague and conflicting standards, new fees and investigations, impractical measurement requirements, and inconsistent compliance expectations, all without solving a single documented problem. More importantly, this bill jeopardizes a meaningful revenue stream for the county. S T Rs generate hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in lodging taxes alone, not to mention local spending that supports businesses and county services. If this legislation reduces S T R activity, and it is my belief that it will, the revenue loss will fall directly on the local taxpayers as it usually does. The S T R revenue decreases, residents ultimately make up the difference through higher taxes or reduced services. Why would we risk a stable revenue source when there is no evidence the current system is failing? The motivation for this bill is political and not practical. The legislation resurfaces repeatedly driven by new, driven not by new incidents or community concerns, but by personal frustration with political and political positioning. There have been no new complaints, no new issues, and no new data, just the same recycled narrative conveniently timed for another election cycle. Talbot County deserves policy based on facts and not personal agenda, agendas. In closing, I want to acknowledge the timing. It's Thanksgiving week, a time where most of us are focused on coming together, finding gratitude, and maybe debating whether, whether cranberry sauce really belongs on the table. Instead, we're here considering a bill that feels, feels a bit like the unwanted holiday turkey that no one asked for. It's overstuffed, it's been reheated more than once, and no amount of dressing is going to fix what's wrong with it. Even the family dog would probably turn its nose up to Bill sixteen twenty-two. Talbot County deserves better, better than political leftovers, especially ones the Planning Commission already tried to send back to the kitchen. I respectfully urge you to vote no on Bill sixteen twenty-two so that we can all get back to the things that actually mattered this week, our families, our neighbors, and our community, which we are truly thankful for. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to Bill sixteen twenty-two?
My name is Bob Haas, I live in Bentley Hay, in the town of St. Michael's. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about, I've heard stories about all the money that the short-term rental taxes generate. It's my understanding that most of the money, most of the money for short-term rentals goes to the county, that the towns, the incorporated towns only are available to short-term rentals within a mile of the town limits. I live in Bentley Hay, we're within a mile of the town limits of St. Michael's. St. Michael's doesn't allow short-term rentals in their residential areas, so there's very few short-term rentals in St. Michael's. Easton is the same way, there's very strict regulations on short-term rentals in Easton. And I don't know any short-term rentals that are within a mile limit of Easton to begin with. Most of them, ninety percent of the short-term rentals, are located down St. Michael's road. So, the money that the incorporated towns get, it's my understanding that they're allowed to use that money for infrastructure, trash collection, you know, roadwork, that type of stuff. But all the money that's collected by the county goes right to tourism. That doesn't benefit any of the citizens other than bringing more tourist, tourists in. So their advertising is all through the country to bring more people in here. I don't believe that this bill will eliminate any short-term rentals. I believe, we were told, there's a hundred and eighty short-term rentals in, in Talbot County. And that is pretty much holding tight. Everybody's grandfather, this bill grandfathers everybody in, as long as they keep their license up, they have no problems. The gentleman, you know, that just spoke in front of me, back in two thousand and nineteen, there was a gentleman, I think his name was Ken Mann, who worked for that same company when we were fighting for the dense neighborhoods to have tighter restrictions on it. He said, and it's in the records, that communities like Bentley Hay, Rio Vista, villages should not have short-term rentals, period. Because he said that's where all the complaints come from, when the houses are clustered in that tight, that's where it happens. That's all I think. And it was mentioned too, that there's only a, a small group that's doing all this. Well, there's much more than a small group. I mean, just everybody doesn't come out. I mean, I can tell you, you know, Bentley Hay, there's probably at least half of the people in Bentley Hay, a hundred people, that are concerned about short-term rentals. Rio Vista's the same way. You can't have short-term rentals in Back Creek Landing, you can't have them in Mardingham because it's covered by the restrictions. I think that the county needs to put tighter regulations on these denser neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on Bill sixteen twenty-two? Yes, please.
My name is Monica Adi and I'm here representing the Rio Vista Community Association, so I think I get five minutes, right? Okay. And our Rio Vista Community Association, H O A Board President Jack Davis is also with me in the audience. We are a community of two hundred and twenty-three homes. We are adjacent to Bentley Hay, also a large community, and we're in the town residential We would like to see one change to this bill, to add the town residential zone to the density limitations that apply and include them with the same density limitations that apply to the village zones. The reason for this is simple. Town residential zone is characterized by small lots, twenty-five-foot front and back setbacks, ten-foot side setbacks, very similar to the village zones. So homeowners, residents of the, of the T R zone are just as affected by short-term rentals as are residents of the village zones. So it just seems in simple fairness that T R zone should also be added. I'd also like to just talk about the bill generally. So I've read this bill several times and it does not take away existing S T R permits. It does not stop the issuance of new S T R permits. And it's not going to wipe out every tourism job in the county. What I think it does is it provides a better balance between the rights of residents by providing more transparency to neighbors and helping to maintain residential laborhoods. And in fact, when the Planning Commission looked at this bill, and as other speakers have mentioned, they, there was, the provisions that were objected to the there was- the provisions that were objected to the most strongly by the vacation rental industry are the provisions that have already been taken out of this bill. So I think the council is looking to try to still promote tourism, but balance this with helping residents and maintaining neighborhoods. The other comment I would make is that Talbot County, of course, is a tourist destination. And there are other tourist destinations on the Eastern Shore that are also looking at trying to support tourism, but still protect their residents and their residential neighborhoods. Mr. Haas mentioned that St. Michael's and Easton have much stricter STR rules. And just this year, Queen Anne's County, also a tourist destination, they didn't have an STR law. They now enacted a new law with some very strict provisions in it. For example, no outdoor music after 8 o'clock at night. Very strict limits on how many people can be in an STR. And Oxford, the town of Oxford, has had an STR ordinance for some time. But within the last couple of months, they just updated it. Why? Because they wanted to strengthen it and help achieve more compliance. And they're taking the needs of their residents into account. So I do support the efforts of the county to support tourism. And everyone understands that tourism is important to the county. But support tourism, but still remember that you've got people living here full-time. You want to maintain the residential neighborhoods. The residential neighborhoods are one of the reasons, and the whole ambiance of the county are one of the reasons tourists come here. So I appreciate your efforts, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on Bill 1622? Please, come forward.
How's it going? Thank you for having me. Andy Warner. I'll keep it brief. Myself and my family own three short-term rentals in Talbot County. I believe a woman earlier said we would, you know, she made the decision to fix up a dilapidated property with the expectation that she'd be able to generate some income off of it. We've done the same. And it would definitely hinder some of the return on that property. And I oppose this bill for all the reasons stated before me. In addition, I propose that we revise the current legislation to reduce the minimum nights from three down to two. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on Bill 1622? Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Anne Marie Flood. I live on Tillman Island Road. I think we have to keep in mind that the bottom line on all this, for all the people that have spoken in favor of short-term rentals thus far, is their pockets. It is a business. A couple that spoke a few minutes ago used the term "family business." I live in a residential zoned area. My home is very important to me. And I'm not sure why I should have to share it with businesses. They're not in- they're not doing this for fun. They're not doing this for the good of Talbot County. They're doing it for their bottom line. It's not-
Just let's keep the comments down and address your comments to the council, please.
Thank you. It's my home, and I have trouble enjoying it because of noise and disruption from neighboring properties that are doing this for income. Is that fair? Is that fair to me? Who's looking out for me? I'm asking for help. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on Bill 1622? The public record will remain open for written comment until noon on December 5th. This bill will be eligible for a vote at our next meeting on December 9th. Thank you all, and thank you, too, for the many of you who have submitted written comments already. We certainly received those, and I certainly read all of those. So with that, we'll close the public hearing on Bill 1622. And if you're going to leave, I'll ask you to do it quietly because we're continuing on with business here with the county manager's report. Mr. Stamp.
Thank you, counsel. The next item that I have on the county manager's report is a request from the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy requesting a letter of support for their grant application to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources.
Excuse me, Mr. Stamp. Would you- let's please allow us to keep this on. Take the conversations outside. Thank you very much, Mr. Stamp.
Thank you, counsel. We have a request from the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy for a letter of support for their grant application to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the San Domingo Creek Park Environmental Enhancement Project. No county funds will be required for this letter of support.
Motion to approve the letter of support.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Would the secretary call the roll, please?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Counsel, staff is asking consideration for your approval, request to apply and accept a grant from the Maryland Energy Administration, local government energy modernization funding for improvement of county facilities. We are requesting county approval to apply for and accept grant funds from the Maryland Energy Administration. As I just stated, this is going to largely benefit an existing capital improvement project that we have budgeted to fund for the Department of Corrections in the Talbot County Courthouse. The county will apply for 1.825101. That's $1,825,101, which requires a 10% cost share totaling $182,510.10. The Finance Office has confirmed there are sufficient funds available for that match in the FY '26 budget.
Mr. Stamp, kudos to staff for identifying this opportunity. We know how we have these infrastructure needs, and we need to find a way of making these upgrades. So thank you. Is there a motion?
With that, I'll make a motion.
Second.
With the secretary call the roll, please.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. And I'm here, I'm going to speak up on behalf of our Parks and Recreation Department. They're requesting council approval to proceed with engineering services for the replacement of the dehumidifier systems at the Talbot County Community Center ice rink and curling rink. We're seeking to piggyback on a contract with Wycomico County with Electrical Automation Services Incorporated. The cost for the engineering work will be $45,100. There are sufficient funds in the FY '26 for this project. And again, this would be to engineer the dehumidifier system solution, which would then go out to bid and come to council for that.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And counsel, I ask Ray Clark, your county engineer, to come forward. He has a request to enter contract for sale or purchase of approximately 1,333 square feet of real property located at 9002 Goldburn Neck Road, Easton, Maryland. Ray?
Thank you. Counsel, again, we work with the property owner, Mr. Firstman. Just kind of give you some history about this. We ended up completing an appraisal on Mr. Freeland's property, which is across the street, kind of catty corner to Mr. Firstman. Mr. Firstman and Mr. Freeman know each other. And so when I was contacted by Mr. Freeland, or yeah, Freeland, he advised me that Mark was basically, you know, interested in working with us. We had dropped off a letter basically outlining an offer to him. At that point, my offer letter included the 70, I guess it was 72 cents per square foot for Mr. Firstman as the offer. At the same time, as in talking with Mr. Firstman, in lieu of basically doing an appraisal, offered him $2,000 in addition to the $1,306.80. Bringing it a total offer of $3,306.80. So we were trying to do this as quickly as we could so that we did not get in a position where we had David A. Bramble, who was working on Goldburn Neck Road, having to demobilize and then ultimately remobilize. They would continue to work. And we also worked with Mr. Firstman in also getting a temporary construction easement so that we could do the work before we had all this settled. So ultimately, I was in communications with Mr. Firstman throughout the process. So the game, you know, again, that's why we were offering him $3,306.80 for the property along Villa Road.
And again, counsel, this is for the Goldburn Neck Road project that we have seen that we've not opened that road. But it also helps enhance the intersection of Villa Road into Goldburn Neck Road and allows us to implement safety enhancements to that intersection by increasing visibility with a growing amount of traffic coming out of Villa Road onto Goldburn Neck Road, which is an area where the sheriff is going to have to do some speed monitoring now because it's been widened and resurfaced, and people are taking advantage of that a little bit.
And raised. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
You can definitely see how much it's been raised. So thank you for that.
Yeah, so, and again, just so the council is aware, too. I mean, the timing for us, we were working as quickly as we could to get Goldburn Neck Road wrapped up before the end of this year because we had $750,000 worth of grant funding. We were also trying to get the Villa Road improvements done. And again, as Clay noted, we were also focused on the site distance on Villa Road. So we're actually ended up removing trees off of Mr. Firstman's property. We worked with him very diligently in not removing trees that they wanted to keep. Everything that they wanted to keep was actually outside our disturbance area of disturbance. One of the things we had to do was work with Mr. Firstman, and, you know, he worked with us as well. There's a buffer requirement for the SDA. We modified the request with him because of the SDA. And so ultimately, we just provided an easement over that SDA versus basically a fee and simple acquisitions.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Clark?
Just one, Ray. When was the appraisal done for the Freeman property?
Freeman property was done probably about 18 months ago. So it was with, usually in my understanding, the appraisals last about three years. So it was done about three years ago.
Okay. And so do we normally have an appraisal process for all property easements?
Yeah, we do. Our typical process is going to basically be, once we know what our needs are on that property, we'll then do an appraisal. But since I had an appraisal on Mr. Freeman's property, I utilized that to calculate what the fee simple interest would be for that property at the 72 cents. And it ended up coming up, I think it was $1,306.80. You know, at that point, you know, if we went and hired and had an appraisal firm come in, it probably would have cost us about $2,000 to $2,400 to have that appraisal done. So instead of, you know, working with the property owner, rather than paying, you know, we agreed on it, basically, not having the appraisal done. He would get paid the $2,000 on top of the $1,300 that was part of the 72 cents per square foot.
Okay. And who approved the waiver of the appraisal? You made that decision?
Ultimately, submitted that to the county as well, just noting this. And I also drafted the letter noting that, that basically we were providing him the offer without, you know, in lieu of providing the appraisal, basically, we would give him the $2,000.
Okay. You submitted that to council?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a date?
I know that the letter that we gave to him was August 22nd, so it was probably in the July timeframe. But I'll verify.
Okay.
I got the memory.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? It does seem excessive to incur an appraisal fee on a $3,000, $3,300 purchase.
I agree that it may seem excessive. But if we have a standard operating procedure in place, I think we should follow the procedure at every, each time.
Any other questions? If not, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
With motion in second. Would the secretary call the roll, please?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Ray. I ask Mike Richer to come forward, your airport manager. He has a request for counsel consideration to award a bid.
Thanks, Clay, counsel. Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving early. Mike Richer, your airport manager. We'll close on an easy one here. This is something we do every three years. We put our farmland out to rebid. We did that successfully this year in bid number 2513. And the highest bidder was Mr. Edward Rowe, who actually currently has the lease. So Mr. Rowe is the high bid for the next three years for 8,600 per crop season. So I recommend that we award the lease to Mr. Rowe.
Any questions on this one? If not, are we ready for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And that's a motion for approvals. If the secretary would call the roll, please.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mike. And finally, counsel, I just announced the county offices will be closed Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th. And I'd like to take the opportunity to wish you and your families a wonderful Thanksgiving. And as always, I thank the council for your support each day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stamp. We are now down to public comment, not general comments that may not pertain to pending legislation. Is there anybody here who wishes to offer? We use the public comment sheet, it seems, for all focused on Bill 1622. But if there's any other public comment here, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we can move on to council comments.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Might as well stick in the same vein. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Safety to you and your families if you're traveling, and just blessings to all.
And I will stick with the theme and wish all a happy Thanksgiving.
It's unanimous.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 9th, beginning at 5:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 3:30 PM and then adjourning to close session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved.
And a second.
And would the secretary call the roll?
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.